Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the April 4th Glendale City Council meeting on Election Day. I hope it's 6:07. I hope everyone out there has voted, and if you haven't, the polls will be open until 8:00 PM. Please get to your polling center and vote. We understand voting has been light or anemic as the phrase is going today. I guess that's the word for the day. So please, take a few minutes, half an hour, get to your polling station and vote. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sananian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here. Next, please.
Next is a flag salute, which will be led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation by Reverend Cassie McCarty of Glendale Memorial Health Foundation. Everyone, please rise.
Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and citizens. May I pledge my prayer. God of our city, God of our world, we are ever in need of your loving presence in our personal and professional lives and in all our relationships. As we gather this evening as city leaders and citizens, may you bring a deep spirit of collaboration. May we appreciate the voice that each person in this room brings for our conversation this evening. May we appreciate the preciousness of each person in this room, knowing that each represents the diversity and greatness of the city. We pray for our citizens that they would flourish and thrive. We pray for our leaders that they would have continued wisdom in their decision-making and kindness in their actions. We ask for your blessing over this gathering and over our city. Extend your love and support as we extend our love and support to one another. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And the next item, please.
Next item is a report of the city clerk. The agenda for the April 4th, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, March 30th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Next item is presentation on appointments at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 11th, 2017.
Okay, Mr. Kasakian.
On April 11th, 2017, the Glendale Housing Authority will have a meeting on the business agenda. Will be the public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding public hearing and approval of Section 8 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan Fiscal Year 2017/2018. 6A1 is resolution adopting and authorizing the submission of the Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 2017/2018 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. While there will be a joint City Glendale City Council and Housing Authority meeting held in the afternoon as well, the item before the two bodies will be Directors of Community Services and Parks regarding the Fiscal Year 2017/18 Proposed Annual Action Block Grant, CDBG, Emergency Solutions Grant Partnership Act Home Programs, and Transfer of Cancelled CDBG Projects Planned for Community Development, ESG, and Home Investment CDBG Funds from Completed and Cancelled CDBG Projects. There will be two resolutions and a motion for consideration. There will be a special meeting of the Glendale City Council also held in the afternoon. Items before the council will be National Community Development Week and Director of Community Development Regarding Sicilia Budget Adjustment. On the evening city council meeting, there will be the proclamation declaring the week of April 24th, 2017 as a week of remembrance, and National Library Week Commendation. Under consent items, besides the minutes, there will be General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding cost of service analysis and rate study for the Water Division of Glendale Water and Power, Director of Public Works regarding Safe Routes to School Improvements Project Phase III Spec 3586, D., General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Authorization to Issue a Purchase Order for an MTS 5100 Protective Relay Test System and Accessories from Manta Test Systems, Inc. There will be General Manager of Glendale Water and Power with a report regarding specification number 3640 and plan number 6837E for the Western Reservoir Spillway Modification in Gloriata Reservoir East Drainage Structure Repair Project. F is the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding specification number 3630 and plans for the slope and site repairs at various water facilities. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power at G, Professional Services Agreement PSA with NewGen Strategies and Solutions, Inc., NewGen, to conduct a cost of service analysis, better known as COSA, and rate study for the Electric Division of Glendale Water and Power. Director of Human Resources Regarding Classification and Compensation Resolution, GMA, Establishment of Assistant Director of Community Development Classification. And I is Director of Library Arts and Culture Acceptance of Grant Funds for the California Literacy and English Acquisition Services Program Grant and Adult Education Block Grant. Under action items before you will be consideration of Item A, Director of Public Works Regarding Fiscal Year 2016/17 Americans with Disabilities Act, Curb Ramp Installation and Pavement Repair Program and miscellaneous work at various locations. B is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Landscape Maintenance of General Government Facilities, specification 3633 Bid Results. And C is Director of Public Works Regarding Update on Wastewater Rates and Commencement of Proposition 218 Notice and Hearing Process for the Purpose of Adopting New Wastewater Rates. There are no hearings, and that is the balance of the items for April 11th, which will be the only meeting in the month of April.
And my last is Mayor.
Oh.
Sorry.[389.12][389.12](Laughter). Next item, please.
Next item is a proclamation designating the month of April 2017 as DMV Donate Life California Month.
Thank you. Yes, yes. And we have Steve Ropfogle here. Steve?
Well, more important than having me here, we have Lori Hartwell. I am a brand-new ambassador with One Legacy and Donate Life. I just joined them about a month ago, where most of the ambassadors and people that are involved with it are either donors or donor families or recipients. I am neither. I just believe that this is something that is extremely important, and that we should all make sure that we have that pink dot on your...
I have a license.
Now, I'd like to ask Lori to tell you a little bit about her story and about her organization.
And Lori's the perfect one to tell a story about the importance, the very importance of transplantation. Lori?
Well, April is Organ Donor Awareness Month, and what that means is that over 120,000 people in the United States are waiting for a life-saving transplant. In the state of California, they have a website called donatelifecalifornia.net where people can go up and sign up their wishes if they choose to be an organ donor. For me, I had kidney failure in 1968. I've lived with this illness for over 48 years. I've had multiple transplants, and a deceased donor has saved my life. It was a man who was in an accident in Denver, and the kidney was flown to me when I was 24-years-old and gave me 20 years of an extra life. Organ donation is so important. A lot of my friends are on dialysis, they're waiting for a kidney, and what a lot of people don't understand is that you can have your little pink dot, but you have to discuss it with your family to decide what you want to do if a worst-case scenario happens. And then, if you want to make sure your wishes are kept and your family may change their mind or something, because when it's grief happens, it's really difficult for people to make this decision, you can go to donatelifecalifornia.net or .org and sign up and make your wishes. But most importantly, I think a lot of people don't really understand the importance of something till it impacts their life. And I know many of you are aware that, you know, I do a prom for all the teenagers with kidney disease every year at the Glendale Hilton, and we have hundreds of kids that come to this prom from all over Southern California and across the nation who are needing transplants. So it's not just, you know, you think sick, older, a lot of younger people need transplants. So I'm very grateful. I spent 13 years on dialysis. For those of you who are listening who may have kidney failure and need a transplant, I had my fourth transplant a little over six years ago, and what's so incredible about transplantation is the innovation is so amazing. That transplantation per kidneys is over 93% successful. That's why there's such a demand. And people always ask me, "Well, how did you get four?" Well, number one, I had to live long enough to get them. And the first two didn't work, they were practicing on them. And, you know, a lot of people have to, you know, realize, because they're like, "How did you get four?" I didn't win the lottery or anything. I'm just asking everybody to consider. I want to thank you, Steve Ropfengel, to bring this to your attention. I brought some cards where you can go sign up, and also the warning signs of kidney disease because we can help perhaps prevent some... I'll pass those over to Arti. And last but not least, thank you very much for your attention, and go sign up now.
And I think Lori is a perfect example of she may have had four kidneys, but if you need four more, you deserve them for all the work you've done.
Also, I have a male kidney too, so people can know.
Ah, oh, that's interesting. Okay.
If I use a different restroom or something like that, I...[667.82][667.82](Laughter). Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Let me... Did you want to comment before I read the proclamation? Anybody have a...
No, no, no. It's great. I just encourage everyone to become a donor. There's really no cost associated with it. It's the right thing to do. I've been a donor for the last probably 15, 20 years. That's all.
Excellent.
You'll change, I mean, you'll make a fundamental impact on someone's life. You potentially save someone's life, so...
Just one quick note, if you're registered as a donor and, you know, don't say that you don't want certain things to go, one person can help or change the life of over 80 people.
There you go.
Between eyes and tissues and organs, skin, the ligaments, there's all kinds of things they're doing now, and you can leave a legacy for up to 80 people.
It's amazing.
It's fantastic. That's fantastic.
All right, give the gift of life. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. So let's see the proclamation for Donate Life California Month. Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and whereas at any given time 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, and whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, whereas over 13 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. Therefore, I, Pola Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim that in recognition of National Donor Life Month, the month of April 2017, is hereby proclaimed DMV/Donate Life California Month in the City of Glendale. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up... There's a misspelling here, I'm sorry. Signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or www.dun-v-i-d-a-california.org. So, but, sorry, since you are a donor, would you please present? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And I hope that...
So, Mr. Ropfogle?
Ropfogle?
Yes, sir.
Go take your picture first.
Yes, sir.
So you are the new ambassador for the Donate Life...
I am a new ambassador. Our regional ambassador for this part of LA County is Alex Parahon.
Okay.
Sitting in the audience.
And I want you to know that we are not extending your diplomatic immunity. You are going to pay those parking tickets, okay? Where'd that come from?
What's that? I don't know.
Thank you.
Ba-da-bum.
We have Alex Parahon in the audience as well.
Alex, stand up. Okay, next item. Very good.
Next item is Mayor's Commendation to the Daughters of the American Revolution for Nancy Sumner, Lieutenant Colonel Nancy Sumner, and Joel Peterson.
Okay, and we have Jeanette Sturdivan coming up. It seems that Nancy and Joel received special awards from the Daughters of the American Revolution, which I think is absolutely amazing, and Jeanette is going to tell us all about that.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for inviting us, Mayor Devine and members. I am here to accept on behalf of Joel, who could not be here tonight. Are you going to be reading some information about Joel, on why he was nominated?
No.
Allow me to tell you a little bit about the DAR and about why Joel was nominated for this award. DAR has actually been around since 1890. We have over... Just make sure I have the exact numbers here. Chapters around the world that are...
I think the microphone isn't working.
Is that working? If not, I'll just use my teaching voice.
There you go. That's it.
Okay. All right. DAR was founded in 1890. It's a volunteer nonprofit organization for women to do volunteer service with... who can trace their lineage back to their patriots who fought in the American Revolution. So anyone can be a member as long as they can trace their lineage back that far. And yes, I did the research, and I became a member in 1994. The membership is really designed to do three things: historic preservation, education, and to promote patriotism. And we have monthly meetings. I belong here locally to the Don Jose Verdugo Chapter. We have monthly meetings, and it's a wonderful organization that gives the opportunity for people to do patriotic activities, work with veterans, provide scholarships, we support schools, and do a lot of historic preservation. The main thing I really would like to talk about is not about just DAR, but also to give you the background on why you're honoring Joel Peterson. The award itself is given to an American, to a naturalized U.S. citizen who has shown extraordinary qualities of leadership, trustworthiness, service, and patriotism. And I'm only sorry that Joel couldn't be here tonight for, not only for you to meet him, but for him to meet you. And I just want to just speak briefly about Joel. He was adopted from Korea at the age of seven and was actually adopted into an American family who had four biological children in rural Minnesota. For those of you who are parents, you'll appreciate this. He was a national merit scholar, and he attended the Navy ROT on a full scholarship. Peterson served seven years as a U.S. Navy officer, and after the Navy, he went into business. I think one of his greatest claims to fame is the book that he most recently wrote, and it's Dreams of My Mother, and it's about his adoption into an American family and his remembrances of Korea. Joel Peterson, just a wonderful member of our community.
And Nancy, I'm assuming that you got the award for the same.
No, I actually received the Medal of Honor for the Daughters of the American Revolution, which I did not expect, and was very honored. But when I got a chance to learn more about the Daughters of the American Revolution and see what they do for patriotism, education, history, I was just blown away what they do, what they do for our community, and how active they already are in our community. So I was really honored to be nominated and to accept it, and to be with those... Talk about powerful women, but it's not what everybody would think that the Daughters of the American Revolution is. It's not what some people stereotype. It's amazing, the fact that they honored myself, you know, as a Medal of Honor recipient, I think was huge. And then, and Joel, he was an amazing man. They're both from your cities, so you mayors should be so proud. Your city is full of, you know, veterans, is full of proud patriotism, education. So I just love it, to be here, your last day, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Nancy.
Now, I have a brochure for... Sorry, Mayor Devine, I have a brochure here for you on Daughters of the American Revolution, so that you can get to know more about them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just want to say that Nancy, you have served... Can you give us a little bit of your background briefly so that the people that are watching? We all know of your accomplishments, but there may be people out there that are watching that do not, and I think they deserve to know.
I'll give you the short of bridge. Retired Colonel from the Air National Guard three years ago. When I retired, I got involved with Veterans Coalition in Glendale, got involved with Wellness Works in Glendale, which is veterans healing veterans. I got appointed to the Board of Governors for the community colleges, and I'm really working on the VRC, the Veteran Resource Centers, and I've actually been really working to get $30 million for the veterans, and it's going forward before the mayor again, so... I'm not the mayor.
The governor.
Governor. But we're really working hard, so I'm really proud to be a part of that, to really fight for our veterans and for what they do need. But our community, it's all about the community embracing the veterans, and our city really has embraced them with our Veterans Village. Once again, thank you, and there's so much to do, and we got Memorial Days coming up, so please, go out and vote. If you don't vote, you don't have the right to. I won't say the word.
Right, right. Well, we are proud of you and of Joel, and I'll read the commendation to... This is presented to Nancy Sumner and Joel Peterson in recognition of receiving an award from the Daughters of the American Revolution. Commend your patriotism and dedication in providing services to the people in our community. Glendale is strengthened by patriotic Americans who value commitment to their local communities. We are grateful to have upstanding citizens such as yourself in our community, and thank you for your service.
(Applause).
Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Just as a caution to anyone watching this from home or who may be watching it later, we are having some audio problems, and the microphone at the podium is not being picked up, is not functioning. We are trying to do our best impression of MacGyver right now and try to fix the dress issue, but for anyone watching at home, that is why speakers at the podium will not be necessarily heard that clearly. Next items are consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sananian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 4D.
Great, okay. I'm going to pull Item 4E. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion on the remaining items?
I will remove the... I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second. And roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And let's take 4D.
4D is Director, City Attorney Regarding Legal Services on Cities and the Glendale Successor Agencies Capital Construction, Renovation, and Repair Projects. D1 is a motion executing an amendment with the law offices of Gibbs, Ginn, Locker, Turner, Sinet, and Witbrot, LLP, Barbara Gadbois, to increase contract cap at $160,000.
Okay, Mr. Sananian?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
So I do have a question. Seems like we've been in a contract with this particular law firm since, what, 2013?
That's correct.
And, but we've had some dealings with them since as early as 2007?
Correct.
So, I mean, four years ongoing. Obviously, we keep adding on to the amount that we reserve for their services. Just want to know, are we at some point going to go and do an RFP and look for another process? Maybe we get some more competitive prices, more better rates?
Certainly, that's if that's the council direction, to bring that back. The next time we have an amendment, we can do that. We've utilized this firm in the connection, especially in the public works contracting, some of the more difficult cases where, you know, you have contractor challenges, that sort of thing, and they are one of the elite firms in this area. As indicated, we've used them for quite a number of times, and we use other firms as well. But given that we have some outstanding work to get done between now and the end of the fiscal year, that's why we've brought this to you now to have the work, the ability to do the projects that are listed in the staff report, finish those out. And if it's the council, you know, request to that we do an RFP, we can certainly do that.
Okay, so I'm looking, initially on January 7th, our contract was for $15,000. Now we're looking at already $160,000. So it's quite a, you know...
Although it is four years, so I mean, $40,000 a year, so, yes, it has increased. And part of it has been, it's just because we use them on an as-needed basis, we just... And as one project goes, we might have another project coming online, and it's been efficient, I would say, to use them. But again, if that's, you know, I would request that we, the council approve this tonight, and then if the council wants for the next fiscal year, we can certainly do an RFP and...
I'll support it this time, and I'll move the item, but I think, so, next time, we should go to an RFP, because four years is a long time.
Certainly.
So unless my colleagues have a question, I'll move the item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And Item 4E, please.
4E is Director of Public Works and Chief of Police Regarding Glendale Police Department Museum. You want his resolution adopting plans and specs and directing city clerk to advertise for bids.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa, just very briefly, this is a project from the Glendale Police Foundation.
Yes, ma'am.
And will not cost the city any fiscal responsibility?
No, this has been impressively something that the foundation has raised $120,000 for. You see the two slides that we have for you, just to give you order of magnitude by way of the scope of the project. Impressive, but modest. This is the lobby as it exists today, and through the magic of technology, this is a rendering of what it will look like... I'm stretching here.[1683.76][1683.76](Laughter). Of what it would look like conceptually by way of the work being done by the foundation board, as they would like to say. So that same area, making use of what is today rather underutilized space, we'd be able to put items in there that tell a story about the history of Glendale by telling the story of the history of Glendale PD.
We have Elizabeth Manassarian, who's a member of the board here tonight, and Edwin...
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, when I take all your talking, please.
Elizabeth Manassarian, come on up, Elizabeth Manassarian. And Edwin Vascanian, is that correct? And they did a special project on Saturday, Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, which was absolutely amazing, which is helping to defer costs from the city, and you want to tell us a little bit about that successful event?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Devine, and members of the council, and Mr. Ochoa. It's $120,000 plus after we get done with the numbers after our Cars for Cops show. I have here with me Edwin Vascanian, who was the chair of the event, and I have with me Frank Saito. Mr. Frank Saito is the president of our Rotary Club, and we had a whole bunch of people that worked together to put the Cars for Cops event together, but I'm going to have Edwin do all the talking and tell you what happened.
Thank you. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Mayor Devine, thank you for coming out, as well as all the councilmembers. Councilmember Garpetian, thank you for coming out, bringing out five cars. Your support was appreciated. The event was a huge success, frankly exceeded our expectations, and all the proceeds will go to the police foundation, most of which will be earmarked for the museum project. So we're happy to have contributed and helped out.
Fantastic, and I understand they're pretty close to the goal, right? Are they pretty close to the $120,000?
Actually, yeah.
Actually, yeah, we're, as a police foundation, we're coming very close to the goal. And all the other organizations are also helping. But I also wanted to mention, to thank the Dads Club of Verdura Woodlands, that actually had a very successful food drive and hamburgers and drinks, and also the, all the Rotary Club members, and the members of the community that came out, and people who brought their cars. And we had a fantastic community event. It was just a fun event, and thanks, thanks to all of you for being there and making it a special event. So, Frank, did you want to say something too?
Well, I think I'll say a few words on behalf of Rotary. We have a motto, is service above self, and we do enjoy the opportunity to be a community. And we have a four-way test in Rotary. First is, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, would it build goodwill and better friendship? And fourth, would it be beneficial to all concerns? And we live by that, and I think our community, committee, and Edwin and Oscar Rodriguez was very instrumental in making this a very successful event. We had over 100 cars, and we haven't quite tabbed leave everything yet, but I believe we surpassed our goal of raising $5,000 for the foundation.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much. I know it's going to be a great project, and now you have your special fingerprint all over that one. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I have a motion to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, on the items earlier, the minutes you said approved that submitted, but we had two other items that were moved by Sananian and Najarian. For the sake of the record, I would ask for a roll call on items 4B and 4C.
Oh, okay.
We did not do.
We did not do? Okay.
Councilmembers, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments?
I'll keep it short.
Councilmember Sananian, okay.
It's election night and everyone wants to...
All right, okay, go.
Attend to that. So, it's election night, that's my comment. We have an hour and 20 minutes roughly left. That's plenty of time for anyone who's back from work or will be back before 8 o'clock to use this opportunity and vote, vote in the city council elections, not only city council, also school board and college board. And let's make democracy work. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you. And I will keep, anyone else? Okay, I'll keep mine short as well. We currently have in the city ordinance banning the retail sale of puppies and kittens, and I've been contacted by Deborah Howard of CAPS, Companion Animal Protection Society. And I'd like for my colleagues, if I could get a second to perhaps, let's see, request an amendment to our ordinance on dogs and cats, puppies and kittens, to accommodate bunnies as well. And with Easter coming up, this could be problematic. I know Los Angeles is, has this in their ordinance. Their goal is to protect companion animals from cruelty in pet shops and in mills. And so, if we could, I could request a staff report on perhaps changing or amending this ordinance to include rabbits.
Is this for discussion to come back to council discussion?
It is, to come back, yes.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So, we have a second on that, so we'll look at that amendment. Thank you. That's it. Next item.
Next item is community event announcements. There were no cards submitted for that portion, and there were no cards submitted for the three-minute general public comments. That takes us to hearings. On 9A is Director of Public Works Regarding Vacation of a Portion of Montrose Avenue Northwesternly of Lockerson Avenue, 2817 Montrose Avenue, Vacation Case Number 182V. A1 is Resolution Ordering the Vacation. Two is Resolution Adopting Plan Number 12240.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. If you want to open up the public hearing, we will advise, just very quickly, it's a rather straightforward case. At 1217 Montrose Avenue, there is a property, and when you look at your staff report and you see the diagram, the configuration of the street is such that there's a portion that juts out a little bit further in front of 2817. This vacation case relates to the city vacating a portion of that right-of-way would fall back to the adjoining property owner. The only real condition to speak of from the staff perspective is that there is a River Rock wall that is on that property adjoining, and so we would require that the property owner maintain that River Rock wall as a design feature for any future project that may come up at that location. Beyond that, there really was nothing that would be objectionable from a staff perspective. Any specific questions? I'm sure either Mr. Lanza Faim or certainly Mr. Galanian could address those.
I need to open that, the public hearing. Okay. Any questions? Can you say River Rock Wall 10 times fast?
River Rock Wall.
Gotcha. Okay, any comments, questions? No public comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and...
Move the item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item?
Next item is, if there is no oral, next item is oral communication. I believe there is one card.
One card.
Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. Seeing manager may approve the matter or, may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. Chinook Ramirez?
Thank you very much. If you can please pass, please. Councilmembers? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, God bless America. I just gave to the city clerk's office a issue of the Epoch Times dated from March of 2017, and it states, the caption reads, "How Sanctuary Policies Shield Criminals From Feds." Immigration Agents Are Forced To The Streets To Find Criminal Aliens Released By Local Jails. Now, keep in mind, the LAPD does not notify ICE when they have criminal illegal felons and/or violent illegal gang bangers detained and in custody. Yes, Charlie Beck and Eric Garcetti and the LA City Attorney, Michael Thier, are harboring violent and evil fugitives. That's why there is high crime in LA. So, I'm wondering, is Glendale doing the same? Is Glendale doing the same? Moreover, once these jails and prison felons are released into the streets of LA County, they will resume their criminal mayhem without remorse. And what these safe haven sanctuary cities are doing is aiding and abetting and harboring these criminal gang illegal felons and conspiring with these criminal known offenders to assault, steal, 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 threaten and intimidate, harass, and terrorize legal law-abiding American middle-class citizens and our beloved United States military veterans, which are impoverished and are homeless. Therefore, what these unethical and corrupted mayor and council members are doing is rewarding these heinous and dialogical domestic terrorists and savages who have no ingrained morals or values or human decency. Thus, we are eternally grateful to the outstanding President Donald Trump and Hebe, the great Moses, for defending the United States Constitution with life, liberty, justice, and freedom. Therefore, we, the people of America, demand that you and your cabinet legally enforce the rule of law and strip all these unscrupulous safe haven sanctuary cities and billions of dollars of funding or grants or money or bitcoins. Not a single penny should be given to every outlaw city that is engaged in fraud, corruption, obstruction of justice, and harboring criminal felons, gangs, and illegals, and dreamers. Furthermore, unethical political pandering crooks, mayors, council members, and city attorneys, and chief of police will all be handcuffed and shipped to Guantanamo Bay for high treason crimes against legal law-abiding American citizens and due process rights violations against all legal law-abiding American citizens and our beloved United States military veterans. In conjunction, ship the following Democratic terrorist, Kingpin, to Guantanamo Bay in shackles from head to toe for subverting Americans of their inherent national democratic sovereignty and crimes against America and illegally terrorizing Americans of President Donald Trump and Hebe and family with unlawful wiretapping, gang stalkings, and all other electronic surveillance modes. Fry and prosecute this partial list of reptilian lizards, and they are George Soros, the Hungarian Jew, Nancy Pelosi, Chuck Schumer, Harry Reid, Bill and Hillary Clinton, Kamala Harris, Jerry Brown, the ACLU, Eric Garcetti, Adam Schiff, Eric Holder, Loretta Lynch, Barack, and Michelle Obama, and don't forget to chemically castrate them. Lastly, thank you Border Patrol agents, and thank you ICE for the massive deportations at full throttle, and let's build the wall and the travel ban must stand. Remember, America first, and the protection, safety, and security and privacy for Americans first. President Donald Trump is, Donald Trump is a genius and a leader who is from, who is firm, disciplined, organized, driven, solid, and with an infectious enthusiasm and a heartfelt desire to uplift and heal the downtrodden Americans, and with a pinnacle clear vision of a gleaming infrastructure, highly opulent, competitive labor force, and highly futuristic supersonic technology. With President Donald Trump is a genius of a leader who is firm, disciplined, organized, driven, solid, and again, who is infectious. And again, we can't stop but repeat what he is. And again, he is contagious. And again, he will enhance our military, and he will enhance America. And God bless America, God bless America. And lastly, I'd like to say happy belated birthday to Doris Day, whose birthday was on April 3rd, 1922. And also, I'd like to give credit, I'd like to give condolences to the family of Robert Osborne, who passed away March 6th. He was 84, and he was the co-host of the Turner movie classics. He was dynamic, he was elegant, he was classy. That kind of elegance and beauty just doesn't exist anymore. Today, we have trash on TV. We don't have what we used to have in the heydays of great geniuses who made such beautiful movies. God bless Donald Trump and God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here's a picture of Donald Trump.
Casey Rosaroff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Fortunately, oral communications is now closed.
I have a question. I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, okay.
So, I learned recently that one of ICE's charges is to investigate money laundering. Did any of our discussion and affirmation of the chief's statement last week prevent us from cooperating with them on money laundering issues? I mean, kind of different from the immigration custom thing that we were talking about. That didn't affect any of that work, did it?
And, no, I mean, there was no statement regarding cooperating with ICE or not. It had to do with the chief's policy regarding law enforcement for immigration purposes, so...
So, we didn't call out?
No.
I mean, it was interesting, there was a big bust in one of the casinos. And so, ICE was the lead agency, and I, as, anyway. I do have some new business, Madam Mayor. I move that in the matter of Housing Authority of the City of Glendale at All versus Salim Karimi at All, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC 4600044, the city council hereby approves the settlement agreement by and among the City of Glendale, the housing authority of the City of Glendale, entities controlled by PNC, the City of Los Angeles, the estate of Gary Squire, Salim Karimi, John Key Mitawala, and Ajit Mitawala. The settlement agreement shall be in the form submitted for court approval and adopted by the court on January 18th, 2017, copy of which shall be attached to this motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmembers, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
I have one more, Madam Mayor.
And just for the record, the second motion is for the housing authorities. So, we were in recess and we're out of recess, and so...
I'll have to act to order.
Yeah.
Since that was the only item on council, would it be appropriate to adjourn council?
We could adjourn council if you...
Move to adjourn? Second.
We are adjourned at 6:50?
So, read the item for the housing authority, please.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that in the matter of the Housing Authority of the City of Glendale at All versus Salim Karimi at All, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number BC 4600044, the housing authority hereby approves the settlement agreement by and among the City of Glendale, the housing authority of the City of Glendale, entities controlled by PNC, the City of Los Angeles, the estate of Gary Squire, Salim Karimi, John Key Mitawala, and Ajit Mitawala. The settlement agreement shall be in the form submitted for court approval and approved by the court on January 18th, 2017, a copy of which shall be attached to this motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have, roll call, please?
Authority members, Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Authority Chair, Sananian?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Adjourn.
Don't forget to vote.